I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. Shannon will not be here this evening, so Alan, can you take over the secretary duties this evening?
Sure.
All right, thank you. We will, I have nothing to, under report to the chairman. Do we want to start with Tom now?
Sure.
Okay. So, Tom Hendrick is here, who is from the state, and he is going to go over some FOI stuff. We've had this, talked about this on our self-evaluation, that we wanted to have a Tom come and discuss FOI and what all that means and stuff, so we're going to just go right into him, so we can be done, and Tom can get out of here.
Yeah, thanks for coming out tonight, Tom. We appreciate it.
It's freezing, so we appreciate it.
Happy to do it. So, you want to talk FOI, huh?
Yes.
Who doesn't? Who doesn't? Right, our favorite topic. I, we appreciate the opportunity to come out and speak with you. It's always, it's always good when you ask us to come out, and that means you're trying to find out more, comply with the law, and be in a position so that FOI kind of comes second nature to you. We do these sessions not to beat you up, not to make you miserable, to answer your questions, really, to try to help, to try to give you the tools to work with going forward, so that FOI isn't a burden. It is the law in the state of Connecticut, so you really need to know enough about it to avoid getting in trouble, for lack of a better word, but it's, some of it is straightforward, some of it requires some interpretation, and that's what we'll try to go over tonight. I always tell people just a little bit about me before I start. I am not an attorney. Does that qualify as good news or bad news? I only, I share that with you because I'm not here to give you any binding legal opinions. None of what I say is an order or a command, but it's based on, I'm in my 19th year at the FOI Commission. I've been doing this for a while. We do these workshops all over the state, and, you know, I'm trying to think, last week is a blur, I was in New Canaan last week, I went Middletown, you know, so it does, we do it when people want us to come out, and we're delighted to do it. Before I joined FOI, I was a journalist. Does that qualify as good news or bad news? I, I share that because I kind of see things a little differently than some of my colleagues, many of whom are attorneys. You know, I, I spend most of my time at the Commission during the day answering questions on the phone. You know that I, you know, by the way, you now have a face to put with a voice. Do not ever hesitate to pick up the phone and call. I will call you back. You know, I have witnesses, right? Absolutely. I've called Tom many times. And the idea is, is to try and get you, you know, the information you need before it becomes a problem. We're always happy to do that, but a lot of times when these questions come in, I can kind of anticipate what's coming, because, you know, way back when, I was on the other side, and I kind of knew what was going on. And the other thing I'll share with you, a lot of times when I do these sessions, especially at night, you know, all of you are volunteers, you board members are volunteers, and a lot of times I get, "Tom, what are we doing here? You know, we're volunteers, we didn't sign up for this FOI stuff. You don't get it. You don't understand how hard this is." I get it. For 10 years, I was on the Board of Ed in my town. I was the chairman for the last five. I get what it's like to have a real job during the day and then come here, especially during budget season. It's almost like a second full-time job, is it not? And I know you get a lot of gratitude. You go to Bill's Drive-In, they give you free food.
Oh, sure.
Right. It's, it can be a thankless job. I get it.
Want a cookie?
And then, and then, you know, you wonder why you do this stuff. As Jack will attest, I was supposed to come a couple of weeks ago, but I couldn't, because I had a meeting back in October. Our, the minority selectmen in our town left town for health reasons. "Tom, would you fill out the rest of his term?" I did, so, so I'm still, I'm still involved in public, on public boards and commissions, so I get it. I do understand, understand what you have to go through. And, and what you have to do is be mindful of the fact that FOI, you know, I said it before, is not just this really swell idea. It is the law. The law will be 44 years old this year. It was Ella Grasso's brainchild when she ran for governor for the first time. And if you do the math, 44 years ago puts us right smack in the middle of Watergate. So, you had a country that was in turmoil, a country that was, you know, besieged, if you will, secret government, government behind closed doors, and people were upset. And one of the things she said when she was thinking about running, not even before she ran, was, "If I'm, if I'm going to run for governor, and if I win, one of the first things we're going to do is create this open government law." And, and she won, and that was really, literally, one of the first things she did. And in 1975, she put forward this concept for, for the open government law, and then she did something that was kind of interesting. She said, "This is so important to our state, I will see to it that it is approved unanimously by our legislature." Think about that for a second. Have you ever watched the legislature? Right? Can you imagine? She guaranteed a unanimous vote on this law, and I'm here to tell you she got it. I have seen a video. There was not a single no vote in the House, not a single no vote in the Senate. It was signed with great flourish. Thank you. She said, "This is wonderful. What a pleasure." And the law went into effect. Now, other than being interesting, it's sort of the kickoff for why we're here tonight, because to get to that point where everybody voted yes, you know, I mean, you, if you've ever been involved in something controversial, you know that that's not an easy task. There had to be a lot of back and forth. There had to be a lot of negotiation, a lot of, "Well, I like this, I don't like that." So, you have a law that's based on a really simple, easy concept: open government, transparency, let the sun shine in. But when you try to read it, has anybody ever tried to read it? If you tried to look at it, sometimes your eyes roll to the back of your head, the where-for's and the whereas and all that stuff. Because to get to that point where everybody voted yes, there had to be compromise. So, you have situations where you're reading it and you're thinking, "Okay, I think I get what it's telling me, but I'm not sure," which means that those of you who are on the front line kind of have to make a call, interpret it, sometimes on the fly, and you have to have the tools to work with to make the right call. And guess what? Even when you make a call, somebody on the other side of the issue may not agree with you. One of the things this law did was establish the Freedom of Information Commission, which is where I work. The Commission's role is to adjudicate situations where people believe they've been denied the rights that this law gives them. So, if somebody doesn't like something, you've said relative to FOI, or done relative to FOI, they file a complaint with us, and you have to go to Hartford and make your case. My goal is to make sure that you have as few of those as possible, and then if you do have one, you're on the right side, because, you know, they've interpreted it differently doesn't mean automatically that you've done something wrong. It means that you're going to have to go present to the Commission as to why you think you've done the right thing. The Commission decisions are binding to, to, to the extent allowable by law. Commission orders you to do something. And our Commission is unique, by the way. It's the only one in the country. You can appeal an FOI Commission decision all the way to the State Supreme Court, which is, you know, speaks to the interpretive nature, if you will, of some of the sections of the statute, but for the most part, what our Commission says is what you have to do. The law is called Freedom of Information, but it's not really about free information. It's about access. It's access to public meetings and access to public records. I'm going to spend most of the time I have with you tonight talking about the meetings provisions, because frankly, many of the records issues will go through staff. You're lucky people. You, the staff will have to deal with FOI requests for records and things. I'll give you some, some generalizations, so that you'll have a concept, an idea, but, but most importantly, you know the meetings provisions, so that you don't sort of wander into an area where you shouldn't be. But I call it, you know, Freedom of Information, because that's, that was a better name, but it's really about freedom of access. And a lot of times, people think it's something that it's not. They think it's, it's free information. They think it's, "Well, under Freedom of Information, how did you arrive at that number for the social studies budget? How did you arrive at that, you know, why did you do this?" They think it's an opportunity to ask questions. And, and it's not that. We're all public servants. We're going to answer questions, but at some point, you may not be able to, or be comfortable answering a question, and don't ever feel that this law requires you to answer a question. It, it requires you to make sure your meetings are open and accessible, and the records that are not exempt are available, but, but that's the extent of it. And I often tell people, people often tell me, they say, "You know, maybe you ought to think about not doing these Freedom of Information sessions anymore, because I could give you an hour of stand-up with some of the questions." Think about working at the Freedom of Information Commission. People think we're the information center for the entire state of Connecticut. I get emails and calls routinely from people asking me to send them records. They have this vision of us sitting in this giant vault with every record held by every public agency in the state, and all I have to do is push a button, and out it comes, and I very politely have to tell them, "No, we're not a repository for records. You've got to go to the agency that has them, and then if you don't get it from them, then you..." Let me just, let me just share one with you, maybe two, because I can't help myself. This, this email comes a couple of months ago. It says, "Dear sir, this is to the Freedom of Information Commission. Please provide an electronic copy via email, preferably a spreadsheet, showing all the Medicaid-paid electroconvulsive treatments, AKA ECT, AKA shock treatment. My request includes every field you have available." Does that sound familiar? "But certainly not patient identifiers. The request includes, but is not limited to, the name of the psychiatrist, license number, date of treatment, age of patient, city, county, name of treatment facility, address of facility, cost of treatment, et cetera. Time frame, as far back as your computer records exist. Best regards, Ken Kramer, PsychSearch.net." Do anyone want to help me with that? I have no idea what that is. So, I send him my, "In Connecticut, the FOI Commission is not a repository for records," you know, blah, blah. So, basically, try to explain to him how the law works, and usually when I do that, people will respond and say, "Thank you very much. Not old Ken." His response to that is, "Well, then, be a good public servant and get it into the correct hands, instead of just blowing it off. Best regards, Ken Kramer, PsychSearch.net." So, if you've ever had anybody like that, rest assured, we all get them. I had one lady call me once and asked me how to get tickets to Mary Poppins at the Bushnail, and I said, "I don't know how to do that." She says, "Free information. Tell me how to get the tickets." So, so, lesson number one, it's not about answering questions. The information can be free, but you have to go get it. You have to do a little bit of the work. And when we talk about the two provisions, the, the meetings provision is probably is most important to you all. Listen to the, to the definition of meeting. Meeting means any hearing or other proceeding of a public agency, any convening or assembly of a quorum of a multi-member public agency, and any communication by or to a quorum of a multi-member public agency, whether in person or by means of electronic equipment, to discuss or act upon a matter over which the public agency has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. Folks, the bottom line is that any time you gather to do your work in any way, shape, or form, whoops, consider it a meeting, and make sure it's properly noticed, that it's open to the public, and there are minutes when the meeting is done. All too often, when I come out and talk to folks, they say, "Well, it was just an informal little gathering. We didn't really, you know, we just went over a couple of things. We didn't really need to notice it." If you were talking about board business, yes, you did. "Oh, it was just a workshop." Classic, at budget time, "It's just a workshop." You want to call it a workshop, that's fine, but if you are there doing your board's work, it's a meeting. We're going to form a little subcommittee. I know about your board, but our, my Board of Education did a lot of work in subcommittee. Do you, do you folks use subcommittee? Not so much? But if you form a subcommittee, even that needs to follow the rules. People say, "Well, the subcommittee's not the whole board," but when you read the definition of a public agency, which is, which is pretty long, it has a phrase that says, "Including any committee of, or created by." So, if you create a committee to do Board of Education work, that needs to follow the rules as well. People say, "Well, we didn't have a quorum. It was just a couple of us. It wasn't..." Now, there's, there's one where I wish I could be more helpful, because I can't. There is an appellate court decision in the state of Connecticut that says, "If you do not have a quorum, you do not have a meeting under FOI." Pause. If you, there is another decision that says, "If you do not have a quorum, you are still having a meeting under FOI. You can't make it up." So, you've got the appellate court in Connecticut telling us the opposite thing in two separate decisions. So, when people call and ask me that question, "Well, gee, it wasn't a quorum. Is it still a meeting?" Could be. It depends on what, it really depends on what happened and what you did. The most recent case, right now, swings towards no quorum, still a meeting. In Meriden, about a year and a half ago, their common council had a small group, they called it their leadership group, and they were in Town Hall, and they were going over candidates for a search committee. They did something that, by the way, I would, I'd strongly urge you not to do. A reporter walked in the room, and they said, and said very politely, "What are you guys doing?" And they said, "None of your business. Get out." You probably don't want to go there with a reporter, so he immediately started thinking about, you know, and he filed a complaint with the FOI Commission, and said, "They were clearly doing important council business." Complaint goes to the Commission, and the, and Meriden's only excuse was, "He didn't have a right to be there. It wasn't a quorum." And our Commission looked at the two appellate court decisions and said, "This one falls to the, to the decision that says, 'Even absent a quorum, they were doing important work, and we, we told them that that was a meeting.'" They didn't like that. They appealed it, and the Superior Court upheld the FOI Commission decision. They have appealed it again, so maybe we'll get a final answer someday, but right now, as it stands, even absent a quorum, you could be having a meeting. Again, the idea is to do your work in public. It's not to try to be burdensome or make it difficult, but if you're doing the key work of the board, you should do it in public. The law talks to us about three kinds of meetings: the regular meeting, special meeting, the emergency meeting. Tonight's a regular meeting night. Comes for a schedule that you submit to the Town Hall. By the end of January of every year, it says, "We meet on the, you know, first and third Tuesday, second, fourth Wednesday," whatever it is, that becomes your regular meeting night. Now, a lot of people see the word "special" for special meeting, and they get all worked up. They said, "Oh, God, we can't do this. We can't..." You can do anything you need or want to do at a special meeting. Here's the difference between the two. For both of them, you have to prepare an agenda. Who gets that lovely task? That, you, you work on the agenda?
Yes.
You want to be as specific as possible when you put an agenda together. The courts have kind of tried to push us in that direction. The, the agenda, I think the words they use are to fairly apprise the public as to what's going to happen, so as much information as you can have is better. At a regular meeting, should something come up. So, if something comes up tonight that's not on your agenda for tonight, you can vote to add it to the agenda, by a two-thirds vote of those of you who are present. At a special meeting, you can't add anything. So, when you prepare that special meeting notice, that special meeting agenda, and you have an item that says, "Other business," or "Old business," if there's nothing specific underneath there, you might as well take it off. Tonight, you can say, "Is there any other business?" And someone can say, "Yes, I'd like to talk about this. We talked about it last month. Can we add it?" But at a special meeting, you can't. That's the fundamental difference between the two. Third kind of meeting is the emergency meeting. Folks, I really discourage you from using the emergency meeting. It's an unnoticed meeting, and the problem comes when you and I might think something's an emergency, and it's not. Every year, after yesterday, after Martin Luther King's birthday, today, no different, I get a call from somewhere, someplace in the state, and they say, "Tom, I've got a problem." And I say, "What's the problem?" And they say, "A regular meeting is tonight, Tuesday night. I always put the agenda in on Monday, 24 hours in advance. I forgot Town Hall was closed yesterday. So, I put it in this morning. That's okay, right?" It's not 24 hours. It's not okay. "Well, then, we're going to have to meet and call it an emergency meeting, because we've got too much to do. It's budget season. We've got to go forward." Oops, I Forgot is not an emergency. In our minds, in our non-legal minds, to give us all a break, it might seem like it, but it's not. The bar is set really high. A lot of times, people say, "Well, what's the big deal?" And I'll just share snippets of a little story not too far from here, Ridgefield, not too far from here. There was a situation where they had an emergency meeting, and it wound up costing them a lot of money. They had an emergency meeting about the dismissal of an employee. They decided that there was a threat, there was a danger, and they wanted to, you know, remove the person from, from his, his employment. And they did it, and then he found out about it, and they brought him down to Town Hall, and he said, "You can't, you can't fire me because I'm going to quit." So, they reconvened this emergency unnoticed meeting and accepted his resignation, and then he thought about it. And he was among the many, we get upwards of 800 complaints a year, who thought he had been denied the access that he had a right to. So, he filed a complaint with the FOI Commission, and the Commission, you know, looking at the letter of the law and the circumstances, said there was no emergency there, and invoked one of its stronger powers, which is to declare null and void what happened at that meeting. Our Commission, if the meeting is felt to be improper, can wipe it out. So, that's what our Commission did. Not the end of the story. Ridgefield didn't like that decision, appealed it, that better not be mine. Appealed it all the way to the State Supreme Court, and the court upheld the, the decision of the FOI Commission. Now, if you're any, familiar with how long this takes, going to the Supreme Court takes a while. So, about five and a half, six years after he was fired, the court upheld the firing, but he hadn't been on the payroll for six years. So, what do they do for back pay? Can you imagine the turmoil? Can you imagine? All because they didn't wait 24 hours. This is an extreme example of what can happen if you don't do it properly, but word to the wise, if you can at all avoid the emergency meeting, do it. If you ever have a situation where you do, you know, there's a leaky roof, something like that, and you need to get somebody up there right away to fix it, and you got to bring the board together to allocate money, something like that, have the emergency meeting. Within 72 hours, create minutes that reflect what the emergency was, who was there, and what you did about it. But my strongest advice is to avoid it, if you can. Your meetings are open to the public. Anybody can come. You don't want a sign-up sheet at the door. Where are you from? What are you doing here? Anybody can come. Anybody can audio or videotape your meetings. I suspect that's not a problem. Looks like you, you do it yourselves. But if somebody comes in with cameras, you know, you can't throw them out. There are still some boards in Connecticut that are camera-shy. They call up and say, "Well, we'll let them in, but can we turn it off at a certain point in the meeting?" No, you can't. It's, it's open. It's public. Anybody can record. But I'll tell you what the law doesn't do, and a lot of people think that it does, is it doesn't necessarily allow people to speak at a public meeting. I suspect you have public comment portion of your meeting. That's great. That's wonderful, but let's suppose you look out some night and say you don't want to. Irrational, I know, but, or maybe not, but, but you could do that, and you wouldn't be violating FOI, is the point. A lot of boards like to put a time limit, especially during budget season. Two minutes, three minutes. You can do all those things, and, and FOI is silent on that. You can do whatever you want. You can mold the public comment. You can have one. You can have two. You can, you know, limit people to a specific subject, if you want. That's all, those are all things that the law allows you to do. I'm not advocating for any of them, but you have free rein when it comes to public speaking. The law wants you to operate in public, but there are ways to exclude the public, and you're all probably familiar with it, if you've been on the board for any length of time. The executive session is one way to do that. Folks, remember that an executive session is a portion of a publicly noticed open meeting. It is not something that sits on an island all by itself. So, if you have executive session, and you know what's going to happen, you should put it on the agenda, but you need to understand that it's, it's limited to five specific reasons. And even if you have a re, a minute, a meeting, is what I'm trying to say, with only one item, and it's an executive session item, you still need to notice the meeting. You need to convene in public, the way you did tonight, and someone makes a motion to go into executive session. By two-thirds vote of those of you who are present, you go into the executive session stating specifically the reason. You go in, you have a conversation. You can stay in there as long as you want, but you have to come out to vote. All your actions must be in public. All your votes need to be recorded. It must be crystal clear who was in the executive session, if you invite anybody in, and then you move on from there. Do not ever take action behind closed doors. Not even, not even a whiff of action should be, you know. Now, again, realistically, you're pretty, pretty sure what you're going to do by the time you come out, but don't show, take a show of hands. Don't, straw votes, all those things. Dangerous. You want to make sure that your, your action is all public. Five reasons for an executive session: a personnel matter, pending claims or pending litigation, a security matter, a land transaction. You know, you're going to build a new school somewhere, and you're negotiating with people for property. You wouldn't have to negotiate, you know, those prices in, in public. The fifth one, something of a catch-all. It allows a board or commission to have a conversation about a document, or documents that are exempt from disclosure. Does the full board ever review bids for anything? I, let's, let's suppose you want to put your bus, your, your transportation contract out to bid. There's an exemption in the FOI Act that allows public agencies to withhold the contents of bids and RFPs until you've actually signed a contract. So, so the, the example would be, you put the bus contract out to bid. All the bids come in. You're not sharing them with anybody else, and you all want to look at them behind closed doors. So, you would vote to go into executive session, because the bids are, are documents that are exempt. You ask your attorney for a written legal opinion. You've got a sticky issue. You want some help from your attorney. You're the client. The attorney's document is covered by the attorney-client privilege. You go into executive session to talk about that legal advice and not have to share it with anybody. Frankly, I know it doesn't happen here, but some boards have expulsion hearings, you know, and you go into executive session, and many people use executive session student matter. Well, that's not 100% correct. What you're really allowed to go in for is to talk about the student's records. And you're all probably familiar with FERPA. It's a, it's a federal law that takes huge chunks of, of student records off the boards, frustrating parents all the time. "Why can't I get it? Why can't I get it?" Not the, you know, not the parents of the kids, but there was a fight, and they, you know, you had the, but the student records are, are records that you do not release, so you're, you're really, the expulsion hearing when you, when you do it behind closed doors is because you're talking about, you know, student educational records. Those are just a couple of examples, but that fifth one is broader. It's something of a catch-all. When you talk about the personnel executive session, personnel executive session, first of all, don't put that on the agenda, executive session personnel. Don't make that part of your motion. The law has been really, the courts have been pretty strict and said, "You need more. You need more information." Executive session discussion of the performance of a high school teacher, discussion of the performance of a member of the custodial staff. I mean, if you don't want to name the individual, you don't have to necessarily. If they're going to talk about you, there's only one of you, so, you know, executive session discussion of the performance of the super, you know what I mean?
Right.
Might as well put the name out there, but you want, you know, you can, you can, you be a little bit, you know, vague, if you want to be, but it's important that you remember that the person needs to be notified before you're going to talk about him or her in executive session. The person then has the right to come forward and say, "No, no, no executive session. I want that done in a public meeting." And if the person sticks with that and insists on that, you cannot go into executive session. I know, has that ever happened? Have you ever had that happen?
Yes.
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm glad that you allowed that to go on in public. Now, sometimes the person will, you know, "I want it in public." You can say, "Well, what if we invite you in?" And sometimes, that's a compromise. The person will say, "Okay, I'll go in with you, and I'll tell you my side of story in an executive session." But you're never obligated to invite anyone in. In other words, that person's right is to do it in public. If they waive that, whether or not he or she comes into the room with you in executive session is your call. The board's right to invite in whomever it wants to give evidence, to give testimony, to use their expertise, but that's the board's decision. Technically, the only people with a right to be in the room are board members. There are no minutes of the executive session. There are minutes of the meeting that reflect when you went in, who went in, what the topic was, and then when you come out, any action you're going to take. But there are no notes inside the executive session. The executive session for pending claims and pending litigation is pretty much what it sounds like. There's a, there's a grievance. There's a lawsuit. You want to talk about your strategy. It also gives the board a little latitude. It can go into executive session to have a conversation about taking legal action. Let's suppose somebody's not living up to a contract, and you're looking to try to get out of the contract, or you're building something, and you want to pull a bond, or something like that. You could, you could contemplate that action behind closed doors, because talking about it in public would negatively impact your position and give away your strategy. You wouldn't have to do that. The last one, the security executive session, I, you know, I have problems with this one, because I never used to have an example of what it meant. Never. And then, you know, not far from here, in 2012, touched off a lot of talk about security, mostly with Boards of Education, frankly. Extra resource officers, new alarm systems, think, all those sort of things. The law says that you can talk about that in executive session. Going into executive session to talk about increased school security at the high school, and you talk about different options and things like that, you'd still have to vote when you came out of executive session. I, I move, Madam Chairman, that we approve the projects for security that we talked about in executive session. The idea would be, if you talked about it in public, the one time you did, perhaps the wrong person was sitting in the audience. And so, you would have the right to have those discussions behind closed doors. You'd still have to take action outside, but at least you could have a more, say, robust discussion behind closed doors. Remember that executive session is for discussion as long as you want, but always come out to vote, and you should be okay. The, the other path, I said there was, there were two, is sort of one of the ones that gives us a bit of a chuckle, when I read you the definition of a meeting. The sentence that follows that in the law says, "Meeting does not include." Meeting does not include. Has anybody ever heard the term "the non-meeting"? Has that made its way over to this part of the state? It's a term that people have started using. It applies to everything that meeting does not include, every one of which we would all call a meeting. You proceed to bang your heads on the table now, but what the legislature did was said, "Okay, these things may, may seem like meetings, and you can call them meetings, but for the purposes of Freedom of Information, they're not meetings." The prime example, I think, for you folks would probably be collective bargaining. Collective bargaining negotiations and strategy sessions are not meetings under FOI. Now, I ask you, what is one of the most important things you do as board members, right? Teacher negotiations, administrator negotiations, you know, all those things. That's where, that's where the money goes, right? Yet, when you do that, it's not a noticed meeting. It's not done in public, and there are no minutes. That term "non-meeting" gives you, gives you a bit of a pause, but that's what some people have started calling these things that are not a meeting under FOI. But I challenge you to sit at a, I mean, how many of you have done the collective bargaining thing? Most of you have been involved in it? It's as much fun as you've ever had in your life, right?
Oh, yeah.
Right? You sit at a table. You sit at a table. You sit at a table, you sit at a table, and you make a proposal, and they laugh hysterically, and they counter, and you laugh, and you're back, and they leave the room, you leave the room, you're there all night. Maybe not getting, you know, that far. And then go home and try telling your spouse that you've been at a non-meeting all night. See how that plays. But that's, it's, it's not a meeting. Executive level search committees. An ex- and a, a top-ranked administrator leaves, and you want to form a search committee to find the new one. They can operate outside of freedom of information. It can be the whole board if you want it to be, just so long if you're ever, ever do that, make sure that when you meet in that capacity, you're only performing those functions. There's a tendency, tendency to say, well, as long as we're all here, let's talk about some other stuff. Don't do it. You want to make sure that you're in that mode. And that one kind of makes sense, because if you're, you know, when you retire, and they want a new, they want a new superintendent, you're going to get applications from people who already have jobs. It's probably not fair for the world to know, especially their current employers, that they're looking for something else. So that one, that one kind of makes sense. Social gatherings. You want to have a party, you want to go to dinner together, you can do that. But, but caution, and I chuckle with this one too. Neither planned nor intended for the purpose of discussing matters relating to official business. When you all go out to dinner, what else are you going to talk about? Folks, let us not be naive, let us be realistic. The conversation is going to drift as, as hard as you might try not to board business. But, but be so careful that you're not making those major decisions. You want to have a surface discussion about something, you want to sort of fill somebody in, you know, I see you got a couple of people missing tonight, they call you up, and they want to know what they missed. That's fine. I always ask, where do the best meetings take place for this board? I'm betting some really good ones take place in that parking lot. Am I pointing the right way, the parking lot, wherever that is, out that, out that way? When I was the chairman of my board, you know, the chairman typically is one of the last ones to leave. People come up with questions, you turn off the lights, you're, I'd walk out the front door, and then little clusters of board members talking, and, and then they scatter like rats, because they knew they're not supposed to be doing that. You can't, you can't do that. You, it's, it's tempting, but you want to make sure that you do your work now. I guarantee you, the one time you, you go out to dinner, and you have that passionate deliberative debate, the wrong person's sitting in the next booth. I guarantee you that's going to happen. So be very careful of the depth to which you proceed with different discussions that are not at the table. The key word to me is deliberative conversations. Make sure you avoid the deliberative conversations that you should be having here, outside of the, outside of the arena. And one of the biggest problems in that vein comes to something that you may or may not have heard when I read the definition. Whether in person or by means of electronic equipment. Electronic equipment was written a long time ago for the telephones, for, when you, the powerful chairman, would get on the phone and tell him you want this, and her you want that, boom, boom, boom. And you come in and every, and you're voting, you know, like a machine, because you had the meeting on the phone before it took place, and you can't do that. And in two thousand and nineteen, we're talking about a lot more than telephones. We're talking about emails, and we're talking about texts, and Twitter, and Facebook, and all those things. I'm not telling you to stop using those devices, but you need to understand, first of all, that when you create those, you're creating public records, number one. And, you know, we're not doing a lot of record stuff tonight, but understand that anytime you create a record, whether at home, whether at work, whether, you know, anywhere, if it has to do with Monroe Board of Education business, it's defined as a public record. And in theory, somebody could ask to see it. So problem number one is if you're all emailing each other with your opinions about an issue or something like that, and you're having a conversation, well-intentioned perhaps, you can't do it. You can't have those conversations. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't send something out to everybody and say, look, I saw this article in the, in the News Times, I want everybody to see it. Or here's, here's a budget breakdown that I want everybody to look at and be prepared to talk about at the next meeting. That's fine. It doesn't mean that you can't do it either, or, you know, it's not just limited to the chairman. The problem becomes, and, and you send it out, it's a great idea that you want everybody to think about, right? You respond, that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard. And you, and you touch off a conversation that should be had at, at the table. You want to make sure that you can disseminate information, but be real careful the extent to which you have conversations. Yeah?
So isn't the easiest way, I meant Tom, to just hit reply and not reply at all? If the chairman sends us out something, and, and I want to share my view, can't I just hit reply and share it to her?
I would, no, see, because that goes back to that issue of even absent a quorum, it could be a meeting.
Okay.
I wouldn't reply at all. Thanks very much, we'll talk next time. That's the easiest way, yeah?
How would that work if you were using Google? Like, how would they get their hands on the records?
They would, you, they'd ask for it, and you'd have to produce it. Somebody makes-
They have to go to Google?
Uh, where, yeah, wherever it, wherever it might be, yeah. When you create that record, it becomes a public record, and you, it'd be incumbent upon the public agency to, to produce it if somebody asks for it.
I'm just asking, because, you know, years ago, they had that terrorist situation, and I think it was Google, or one of those companies refused to give the FBI the emails.
Right.
So if someone's Googling each other, and they ask for it-
It could be a problem, it could be a problem that way. But in theory, you'd, you'd have to find a way to get it. You know, where, where it's, the, the way, the law is not caught up to where the technology is today, for starters. They never envisioned the extent to which we use email. You know, my, my kids, I'll say to them, gee, I haven't talked to you in a couple of days. Dad, I just talked to you yesterday. Well, they texted me yesterday, but I didn't hear their voice, you know? That's how, that's how we communicate today. But the idea is it's still a public record, and until, you know, the law is restructured, you'd have to find, it, it's written in there that the agency is responsible for, for producing any public records. The, you know, the, the email thing and the text thing also, I just want to throw out, I don't know if you communicate, if you have your devices out during meetings. My strong advice would be not to communicate with each other. Uh, we've had a couple of boards get into trouble, even though there, there weren't, there was, there's, there was a woman in one town who was absolutely positive that at a planning and zoning meeting, one member would, you know, he was, he, he claims he was, you know, texting his wife about, you know, when she, when he was coming home. But it created just an ugly scene. The best thing to do is to put the phones down during the meeting. Because in theory, if you're having a meeting within a meeting, it could get, it could get ugly, and you just want to make sure you just stay away from that. We are not the FOI FBI, it doesn't mean we're going to come down here with cameras. That, that doesn't touch off a problem until somebody complains, but it's just an, an idea that you might want to stay away from i- if you can.
Tom, could you talk about personal accounts too?
Right. I, I, if, if it wasn't clear, it doesn't matter what account you're using, whether it's a personal account. Do, do you have Monroe Board of Education accounts?
We do, yeah.
That's great. A lot of times we hear, that's, that's highly recommended, but many towns, especially some of the smaller ones, don't do that. So everybody's using their own email accounts and things like that. Again, fine, except if somebody wants something out of that, it doesn't matter where it's been created, where it sits. If it's, if it's yours, it's a public record, you gotta, you have to produce it, doesn't matter where it comes from. The last thing with, with meetings that we should talk about is minutes. Is that your job? See, she's, she's sort of hiding, right? Folks, remember this, minutes need not be the recreation of war and peace. They are not every word that everybody write, says, or, or wants. A lot of times people write minutes that are frankly too long. And then what happens is this, I didn't say that, I didn't mean to say that, that makes me sound really dumb, can we take that out? I talked to a, a town clerk today. There, they have a new clerk at this particular board, so the new clerk submits the meeting, and one of the members, minutes didn't, one of the members didn't like them, and did her own set of minutes and tried to supersede. If they had just been crisp, you have to do the minutes that reflect, the only thing that's really required is a record of who votes for what or for whom. That's the only thing that's really required. But you want more than that, you're creating your Board of Education's historical record, you want more than that. But how much more is, is in your hands? It's not required that you write every word that everybody says. And you want to, you want to make it so crisp and so concise that you can tell what happened, but not at the expense of making this poor woman crazy and having to write every word that, that's down there. Remember, the minutes need to be available in seven days, and once they're in, they're in, and people say, well, what if we want to change them? You would change them at the next meeting, so that the minutes that are submitted for this meeting would be in, but any changes would be reflected in the, in the next set of minutes. That's, that's how you do it, so you're not constantly having multiple sets of minutes. Mindful of the fact that you have other work to do, let me just take a minute or two to talk to you about records, we kind of hit on it. It's best to understand that everything is defined as a public record. We sometimes tend to get possessive, their mine, you can't have them, their Board of Education, you can't have them, that we get selective, I like you, you can have them, not so sure about you, you don't get them. If somebody makes a request for records, understand that they are public records, and then does FERPA apply? Is there attorney-client privilege, does it apply? Don't automatically assume because of who is doing the asking, or what the record is, that you're not going to give it out. It's best to think, okay, it's a public record, now we decide who has to review it, does a lawyer need to look at it? And then you, then you take a look at that. There are multiple exemptions and exceptions to different kinds of records. You know, those of you who are staff members are, you're probably aware that even our personnel files are public records. And there are things that could be withheld because they're an invasion of our privacy, from a standard of set back in nineteen ninety-three, but the bar is pretty high. The, the nineteen ninety-three case that said it was about a teacher who objected to the release of her attendance records. And the Supreme Court said, no, no, the attendance records of all of us who work in the public sector are public period, end of story, give them out. To have been an invasion of her privacy, the release of those records would have to have been both highly offensive and not a matter of public concern. It's got to meet both prongs. So, gee, it's embarrassing that, you know, the, the teacher, you know, left, left school grounds, and we saw him at the liquor store. Well, it's embarrassing, and it doesn't look good, but it might be even offensive to tell people about it, but clearly the public had a right to know, because the teacher was disciplined for, for doing, doing that kind of thing. So it's got to meet, it's got to meet both prongs before, before the record's not released. You know, we, we mentioned bids, we mentioned records that collective bargaining, negotiating records can be withheld. What I would suggest is that just for your information, take a look at the different exemptions, exceptions, so that you have some idea. If you all are ever asked for records, there are sometimes people come at board members, and they say, you know, give me all your whatever. First of all, alert the superintendent or central office, but make sure that the requester gets a response in four business days. Response doesn't mean produce the records, it means we are receipt of your request, because if they don't get that acknowledgement in four days, they can file a complaint that you've said no. So always make sure that somebody's aware that this request came in, and, and you move forward that way. Are there any questions about anything that we haven't touched on, that you wanted to ask about?
So if a board member gets a request, it has to be in writing though, does it, does it? You can't just say, hey, give me your records, they need to make it in writing?
If the person wants a copy, the public agency can ask that the request be put in writing. The person says, I want to inspect that record, you can, you can set it up, but that technically does not have to be in writing. If you ever get requests for records, and, you know, central office, you, I know you do. You have a right to know what's being sought. A lot of times these requests come in, and they're all over the place. Have a conversation with the Requester, and try to at least figure out what's being sought, because a lot of times people don't know what they're asking for. They want information, but they don't know what records contain it, the conversation is always really helpful.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, most of us don't get requests directly. But we should be aware of what we should do, in case somebody does come specifically to us.
A conversation might be a good idea.
We generally try to respond in twenty-four hours, is our rule of thumb.
Right, that's, that's good. I have a colleague in Virginia who stands up in front of these big crowds in Virginia and says, hi, my name is Maria, email bad. Everybody looks up. Her point is, think before you write, think before you send. Understand that once you create that public record, somebody can ask to see it. And, and, you know, we're not necessarily as artful as we otherwise might be when we write emails. Um, we say things in maybe coarse terms that we shouldn't, and you just always, always think, when it has, I mean, obviously, conversations among your friends and things like that, no. But when you're talking about board work, board business, be, be very careful.
You know what, I have a question with regard to technology and talking board business on social media. What happens, you know, a board member starts engaging on, let's say, a Facebook, or an Instagram, or a Twitter with regards to board business? Is that covered by FOI, and if such, to what extent, or is that-
You know, responding to someone on, on a Facebook post or something like that, one individual, probably not, because it's out there anyway. The problem comes when another board member jumps in, and they start having the conversation. You want to be real careful about that. It's more of a meeting issue. The only time I can remember a Facebook issue was the acting director of the Department of Banking put some stuff on his own personal Facebook page, but he, he wasn't responding to anything, he was posting it. And it was banking business, and the company that he was dissing wanted the post, and he took it down, and it got very, it got very messy. But it was his Facebook page, and because he was discussing and talking about policy and things that were going to happen, he would have had to produce it.
Okay.
What else, anything else? Okay. I always bring these with me. I call that the Freedom of Information American Express card, don't leave home without it. It's highlights of the FOI Act, they're very good for a wallet, a purse, a desk drawer. They're highlights, it's very small print, but we're a very small agency, so you got to give us some slack there. As important, folks, on the back is our phone number. Do not ever hesitate to pick up the phone and call and ask a question. No question is stupid, I would rather have you call before something explodes than, than afterwards. And then I brought some of these too. This is what I call the, the meeting cheat sheet, it's a grid that talks to you about when meetings need to be noticed, when minutes are due, different kinds of meetings, and things like that. I'll leave those here too, feel free to take them, if they're extras, pass them out. Anything else? You are welcome, guys. Good luck.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Happy to do it.
Thank you, Tom.
Keep hitting the microphone, okay?
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks again for coming out.
You're welcome, you're welcome, anytime.
Great. All right. We will move on to our approval of our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jerry, do I have a second? Thank you, Christine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. Um, our MACIC reps are not here because of midterms and AP exams. Um, does anybody have any other reports of, for committees and liaison reports? All right. We will move on to public participation, if anybody would like to speak. All right, we will move on. Well, we're moving right along. Report of the superintendent.
All right, first we have a review of the fund activity statement, Gabby, if you'd walk us through that?
Just very quickly, from an insurance perspective, um, we're still not in a great place. We have thirty-four claims over twenty-five thousand, and we have three claims over stop-loss at this point this year. Um, a little bit better than last year, um, in terms of stop-loss and things like that, but a, a little bit worse in terms of total cost out there. So, um, you know, we're still, we're still kind of skating on, I don't know, thin ice maybe, I guess, is the best point, best way to put it. But we're watching it, and, um, we're hoping to get through the end of the year, um, you know, safely, the spin of our teeth, I guess, would be the best way to put it. Other than that, we're going to begin asking departments to close POs. It's, you know, mid-January, and we start telling people to close out POs now, so that way they can spend all the money that they have left. Then we can get everything closed out by March, hopefully. And that, it just makes our close in June a lot simpler, and it makes our audit a little bit easier. So we're kind of, that's where we're at right now.
Any reason for the huge spike downward in claims in December? That's unusually low. Well, I guess we were like that in last-
There's, there's one of, well, I'm, I'm going to be quite, I took the last three days in December off, um, so I didn't have, and when I looked at the funding notices, we weren't getting any calls for funding. My guess would be that, um, doctors' offices and, you know, bill payments were also closed that last week of December, so they weren't submitting things to Yale for pay, or not, yeah.
So was going to have a-
Sorry, they weren't submitting for Cigna for payment.
Big swing up in January.
So I think January, you're going to see it going back in the other direction, unfortunately. I, I wish I could say that it was a trend, but, um, um, no.
Yeah.
All right, and then next, just after the ins- the insurance information in your packets, is, uh, based on the feedback from board of ed members, at the last meeting, we put together a couple of surveys, uh, for your review and feedback. The first one is to community members about communications, and this is designed to get feedback from the community at large about our communications. And then the one that follows that is a survey to all of our families about communications. I looked back to see the last time that we had done that survey, and time flies, it was twenty fifteen, doesn't seem that long ago. So we are due to get this out to our, our community and find out how we're doing with communications. Uh, so if there's any changes you want in these- So if there's any changes you want in these surveys, feel free to mention it now or even send an email later on if there's any changes you'd like. But we really try to include comprehensive information to get feedback about how we're doing with communication, all right?
How are you sending this out?
That's a good question. The, the school one is easy, we can use school messenger. The community side is tricky. We, we really have two choices. One is we can use snail mail. The trick with that is we did get some criticism last time when we're using funds for, for doing that with the newsletter. So we have to be sensitive to that. The other possibility is I talked with Tanya Bombaro, Ken Kellogg's assistant, about what, what resources the town has. And probably the best one is Ken Kellogg's Facebook page. So that's a possibility in using the town website as well as our website to try to get out to as many community members. So those are some of the things we're exploring to do.
Doesn't he also have like a messenger system too?
He does. Part of the trick is that it's a reverse nine-one-one. And I think, you know, they don't want to co-mingle non-emergency with emergency, which makes that a little tricky too.
Okay.
All right. So that is a piece we'd have to work all the way through though. So I'll keep you posted on that work, all right? And then the next thing we have for you is, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over the district Facebook account linked to Twitter. The, the request at the last meeting was about getting board agendas and meetings onto Facebook, so we've done that. The other thing is we've linked my Twitter account to the Facebook account to create efficiency. We're trying to do the same thing with Joe's to see if we can connect a couple face, Twitter feeds into Facebook. We're trying to up the ante with our social media presence, especially with the newspaper, with the courier going away. So we're going to continue to work on that and look to maximize that connection with the community as much as we can. And we had two likes for the board of ed minutes being up there, so that's a start.
Wow.
Yeah.
Could you use Monroe Patch to send out?
We could, and matter of fact, Joe, is that who, oh, no, you were talking.
I called the voices today for, to find out who to send a press release to for the upcoming kindergarten registration, but Patch is a good one.
Right, just because they send out emails and Facebook, right?
So we could definitely look into that. I mean, it's funny, you know, we were working on kindergarten registration today too. And that's a new complexity without the courier. That was one of the resources that we used. So we're really looking to find any and every other way to communicate out. So that's a great suggestion and definitely will, will look into working with the Patch too.
Yeah, not having a town newspaper is like difficult to try to get any information out to people.
It is, yeah, and it definitely makes it harder for us.
Yeah.
And the next one is Cabe's Day on the Hill, just to make you aware, that's also in your packet. And forgive the fact that the middle of that page is upside down, it was a trifold that was photocopied for you. So that's coming up, as you can see, on March twentieth. And it's an opportunity for board members to interact directly with the legislature. So I would recommend that any board members interested, contact Donna or myself so we can get information out and get as many people registered. Yeah, March twentieth starts at eight-thirty AM at the Bushnell. And given the, I, I would say that this is one of the most important years for us to get a good showing here. Given all the conversations about impacts of state funding on municipalities, especially suburban municipalities. So I think there is a heightened level of urgency with this and if you're free at all, it'd be worth considering going.
Jack, if, if you meant to attach a link, it's not there.
Yeah.
To.
On our agenda.
Yeah.
On the electronic one?
Yeah, it's not on ours.
Oh, okay. Just the hard copy made it through?
Nothing.
Nope, nothing.
Just says Cave on the Hill, that's all, it's no link, no nothing.
Okay, let me check with.
That's okay, I explained you.
So like all these are active links you can go into, but not that?
Not that one, okay. So in the meanwhile, if you are interested, if you can just send me an email or Donna an email and we'll get people registered that are willing and able to go. Okay? And that is what I have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we already had our presentation by Tom, so we can move on. We have no old business unless somebody has something under old business. All right, we will move on to new business. First up is discussion of our self-evaluation. Wow, it seems like we do this, it comes up so quick because Tom Hendrick was a, a point out of our self-evaluation last year. For us having in. When did we do this last year, Jack? When did all the responses have to be in by?
Uh, we, it's funny, we were looking at old agendas, that's why it is on this agenda, this is when the conversation started. If I remember correctly, we had gotten this out, I believe in March and ultimately got everything in by April?
Yeah, and we probably met around May.
Ultimately in meeting, I think that's what it was.
Yeah, because, yeah, because, and then Tom had was, we had said, well, we're not going to do him in September. And then he couldn't come till January. And I want to say, yeah, so we'll put this on that, I guess, March first.
So I'll send out the survey to board members by March first?
Yeah.
Okay, you got it.
Get two weeks or so to, two or three weeks to do it and.
Okay. And then also, just so you know, the draft evaluation is in your packet and just like the other ones, any, this is the verbatim, what was used last time? So any suggestions for edits?
Yeah, look at them because there is a question and we discussed it, oh, will you fix that?
We fixed it last year, yep.
Okay, because, you know, we, we, for a couple of years kept going, we need to change this, but look at it anyway. The questions that are here because in case there is something that is not worded the way we like and stuff, you know, let's fix it in this one. So if everybody could have that to jack by, you know, next two weeks or so, you know? Just look at it, see if anything is an issue and if so, let's change that question or adjust that question. Because there was some, right? Yeah, I thought even last year, we talked about even last, I know we changed one, but even last year, we talked about others that were like, we don't like this word in it because, you know, that's what was hanging us up, like a, a word in it. So let's fix that. And stuff. Okay. Perfect. So then schedule date for Board of Education self-evaluation, let's say we send that out on March first. Give like three weeks. Easter's late this year, so I would say probably after Easter. By the time you guys get it back, we'll always have to send out reminders. Then you're in the beginning of April, then you have Easter, so I would say, or spring break, sorry, not Easter, spring break. So maybe. What does everybody think, like that week of the twenty-ninth of April? Because everybody comes back from spring break on the twenty-third. That week is the, a fifth Monday in April, so there won't be a board meeting that week. So would everybody be open to do it on the twenty-ninth? Since that is a off week because it's the fifth Monday?
Yeah, that's good.
So that's the meeting when we review the results?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's go, let's shoot for April twenty-ninth.
You got it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Curriculum, new course proposal, poor Jim has been waiting all night for this.
Hey everyone.
We're discussing. Perfect. Are you going to discuss, you want to discuss advanced science first or the living earth?
I'll discuss advanced science first. I'll be coming to you over the next year or so with all the updates to next generation science standards that are going to hit six through twelve. Kind of two strategic things that you should be aware of that are going to be in and amongst these. At the high school level, biochemistry and physics are still the core courses that hit the, the standards pretty well with some minor adjustments. And those are the ones you're going to hear about. The ninth grade class that we're running right now is an integrated science class, really isn't going to be needed after we massage the other three courses. To get us through that transition, the first step is to create a course that'll be a tenth and eleventh grade course, possibly a twelfth grade course, this advanced science class. Five years ago now, I came and proposed a lower level, lighter math version of physics. And it's been very undersubscribed. It was really targeting students who are going into a nursing program that really didn't feel confident with their math skills. And what we're hearing from those students coming back from colleges, they really need the math in there. So they're taking the, the college prep weight one version of physics. So this will really replace that thirty-level college prep weight two physics and cover some other topics as well. So kind of the, as we go through, when, when I, I'll kind of talk about the book that you're all looking at right now anyway. Biochemistry and physics will absorb the fourth area that are part of the standards, the earth science. So this advanced science course looks like physics with earth science and no math. If you kind of page through, the standards are kind of tough to read through, but if you look at them, they're primarily physical science standards. And then there's a small amount of earth science and then engineering standards at the end. In part C, I kind of started breaking down where we thought the, the units would go. And again, it's a mix of topics that we're covering in the physics class that are lighter in math. There's some astronomy in there, there's some earth science, and then there's some, some potential places to put a little bit of chemistry there. And we start talking about physics of the geosphere and, and pollution and man's impact on the environment. This, this course would be a, a lab course to allow students who are heading off to college to check that off. Since most schools are looking for two to three years of a lab science. Otherwise, it's maybe easier if I answer questions you all might have about it.
I have questions. So how is now science going to be in the new standards done? So right now you have grade nine, some kids go to biology, but most kids go to nine. Then you have biology, chemistry, physics, and then it depends on what you started with, where you ends up with.
Right.
So how is it going to work if there is no grade nine? Is everybody just going to start at biology or what's going to happen?
Eventually, yes, we're just not ready to make that transition this coming year.
Okay.
So this is one of the, one of the steps in that transition process and kind of the smaller, lowest risk one.
Okay. All right, and then like, so by the time they get up, so if they take biology, they take chemistry, they take physics, they could do advanced science, they could do physics two. They could do the AP biology, the AP chemistry, you know, depending on.
Correct, and that's, that's what I'll come to the board with. Once we've kind of fleshed it out, I'm working with Jay Greenwood and Julia Strong and the whole vertical team within science to kind of come up with, what does that flow chart look like for every student we have in, in science? I think that's the biggest fundamental difference is, Next Gen is really three and a half years worth of standards that we're going to cram into three years. We want to make sure every student goes through a sequence that makes sense. So right now we have students taking the off-ramp into some of our electives and we'd be missing some of those junior year. So we want to kind of revamp, make sure that the electives are hitting those, if, if that gets them through. And the advanced science is a way to really make sure that more students are getting through the physics, chemistry and earth science standards that they wouldn't otherwise get.
And is advanced science just going to be a college prep level class or is it going to be an honors to?
It'll be a college prep two. So it's targeting again, lower math, students who are struggling with, with the math content in physics. It would really replace that and it would replace the, the thirty-level physics that we spooled up five years ago that's undersubscribed.
So you wouldn't take both, so you wouldn't go take an AP physics the following year, take advanced science? You'd take either or that possible junior year when this is all fully integrated?
Right.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? For resources for this one, we haven't targeted a textbook yet. One of the, the kind of common denominators that we have right now is textbook companies have stamped NGSS on a lot of the books, but they're not really great fits. And maybe I should start talking about this book because we found a book that does kind of an integrated approach, at least for biology, to start bringing in some of those earth science standards. So if you skim through the book, you'll notice it looks like pretty much a, a biology book with, it'll look at impact on San Francisco Bay, food webs as a result of man's impact. There's a lot more application-based biology in there that also ties in the earth science. I haven't seen full books, but I've seen draft versions from the same company. They're doing the same integrated earth stu, earth science and chemistry, integrated earth science and physics. So it's possible we could be looking at those in the future for the other courses. Right now, our intention is to supplement the other courses, including this advanced science, with books that we already have, online resources that we're already using that are free of charge and then other things that teachers are using at their choice and preference depending on the content. This book, a little bit of history on this one, California Having Very Deep Pockets commissioned this book. And if you look through it, almost all the examples are San Francisco Bay and Northern California Redwood Forests. And it's a, it's a very California-centric story in here. But what they've done is they've taken the NGSS approach of every single one of the units, and there are only six units. Starts off with a phenomenon, that phenomenon might be looking at what happens this year when locusts come. And it goes through the whole food web, energy, matter discussions about that phenomenon. And then it has activities, each one of the units has somewhere between fifteen and twenty activities. And if you start doing the math on six units times fifteen times two days per activity, we don't have enough days in a year to get through them all. So I think as we've looked through, this is a really good fit for what we're intending to come to you later with on what bio should look like a year from now. And it'll give us a chance to kind of test drive things next year with, with our biology classes on some of those topics. I would say that the book itself, because teachers are already going to go into it knowing there's no possible way they could use all the activities in the book. We'll start picking and choosing and probably five to ten years from now, we won't even be using the book at all. It'll be again, kind of where we're at now, a very teacher-driven, based on student inputs course. But it does hit all the standards and, including the earth science standards that are hard to fit in otherwise. Cost, we priced out a number of textbooks that are being used in the area that aren't great fits to, to this integrated approach to earth science and biology, but that are NGSS approved and they're between a hundred and fifty and two hundred dollars. This book, not the teacher edition, but the student edition that was going around, it's paperback, it's a workbook, it's twenty dollars. So it'd be replaced every year and we could replace it every year for a number of years and still not cost the same amount as a hardback book that really isn't heavily used right now. So I think it's a really good compromise and a, and a really good approach for us to get really running with an NGSS program.
So this book will go into our fast forward to biology level classes for next year?
All levels.
All levels. Is this in addition to what they're using now or is this going to replace it?
So this will become a primary resource and this comes with online resources for every single activity that are all public domain activities. So for example, Paul Anderson's videos on Bozeman Science, it's a very common series of tutorial videos that most of the teachers use. They're linked in with each activity where it's appropriate, definitely, definitely something that I think would benefit both students and teachers. What I could see is at each different level and as we kind of test drive things next year, we'll figure out which of these hundred and eighty activities really are worth doing. And we'll kind of come back to the table with, here's our proposal, three more formalized change to our curriculum.
And now in ninth grade, are they doing earth, already some of this earth science there, so it's going to be kind of a repeat?
Correct. So as we take, and that's what we found as we did the crosswalk with the standards, earth science is probably the weakest area that we're covering now. But we do some of it in that integrated class. So next year's ninth graders won't be any worse for the wear going through that, the pre-chemistry that they go through. And then there are some life science and physical science. It really is an integrated course. We'll really be just shuffling around some of the things, changing the emphasis. For example, within biology, one of the things that gets de-emphasized is we have a fairly large unit on taxonomy that we use to go off into comparative anatomy. But at this point, it's, it's really just a vocab drill on phylum order, family genus and naming animals with the Latin by names. Really is no value to that. Shows up on SAT subject exams for one or two questions, but really isn't something that students struggle with or wrestle with or provides intellectual challenge. Things like that are in this book, it goes right into comparative anatomy in the cells chapter. So you do a series on cells and you do a series on body systems and you start talking about the digestive system in starfish, mice, humans, and you compare them. So it really is a, it's a good book. So, it really is a, it's a good book.
Thank you.
Any questions on the textbook?
All right. Anybody else have any other questions for Jim? All right. Well, this will be, these two both, new curriculum proposals will be, well, actually, one's a new course, one is just changing the instructional materials. Will be up for a second review and a vote next meeting.
If it's all right. I'd just like to thank Jim too and Sheila for their thoughtful and very capable leadership with this work. There's a lot that goes into this and as you can tell, he's incredibly knowledgeable in his content. We're lucky to have his leadership.
Thank you. All right. We will go into item E, which is the Third Annual Connecticut SAT School Day Testing Administration, which is going to be on April 9th. And I guess we need to vote on an early dismissal. Do we just keep beginning to do this every day, every year?
Yeah. The problem is that the calendar comes out, but the SAT day is not picked until usually the early fall.
Oh, okay.
So, we don't, we don't have it.
Because like every year we do this. I'm like, why don't we just do it?
Well, it's funny. I was, I sent out an email today. Do we have this for 2020? It doesn't exist, unfortunately. So, we have to do it this time of the year. So, we're very fortunate though to have the former high school principal with us to speak in any detail about this that we might need.
So, since we moved to the SAT School Day, that's, we have the freshmen taking the PSAT 9, the sophomores taking the PSAT 10, and the juniors actually taking the SAT. So, we have, you know, roughly close to 900 kids testing in the building from about 7:30 to noon for regular time. You know, the feedback from the teachers the first year was the kids were shot afterward. It was so, such an unproductive day following that. First of all, you've got to give the kids lunch after that. So, you're really, between our three lunch waves and trying to get lunch in classes in between 12 and 2, was pretty fruitless. On top of that, we also have another 35 classes here at, another 35 classrooms here at MASIC that are used for additional time as well. So, you have kids and staff booked up, taking additional time on the, you know, for their accommodations. So, it's really, it's been a good thing for the kids. So, usually what we try to do is two waves of buses. The kids at, you know, the large majority of the kids, probably I'd say, three quarters of the kids at noon and then another wave for the kids with extended time at 2 o'clock. And historically, what we've done too for the seniors is given them the day to prepare for Capstone. It's about a month away from the Capstone project. So, for those seniors who haven't presented yet, they'll use that time to get ready for Capstone.
And they could come to school?
And they, and the library, that's a good point. Thanks, Alan. Yeah, the library's open. Carl Bodnar and Ken Rider are in here to help them with their presentations, with any portion of the capstone that they need. And kids have, kids have taken advantage of that.
Great. So, I have a motion to approve the Third Annual Connecticut SAT School Day Test Administration on April 9, 2019, and have a MASIC early dismissal day as presented. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Christine. Second, any discussion?
It's a half a day, so it still counts.
Oh, yeah.
It does. Yeah.
We could also probably, you know, any last minute pieces of NEAS that need to get done too. You know, it's a half day for students, but the staff are still here, so.